Hi, everyone. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Tonight is Wednesday, May 31st. We're at the Thurston Middle School at 7:00 PM. This is the Westwood Board of Selectmen meeting. We have somewhat of a brief agenda, but I expect a pretty deep night in discussion. This room does not have a flag, so we're going to waive the Pledge of Allegiance. We're going to grant Westcat permission to record this meeting. Is there anyone else who wishes to record the meeting? Seeing none. I'm just going to give a very brief chairman's update. I didn't want the week to pass without mentioning our Memorial Day commemoration on Monday and how beautiful it was. There are so many people that we could thank, and I won't go into them all. Mike Gillette, our town administrator, and his team and the veterans group did a great job. Police, fire, public works, and the town. The turnout was just simply amazing. People were overwhelmed at how many people turned out. It was our first year holding this event in the new renovated part of the cemetery, and it was a great event. So, thank you to all who did that. We have one brief action item before we talk about Islington. As we had mentioned last time, our fire chief is retiring after 40 years of service to the town, 20 of which have been as chief. His retirement will be effective June 24th. However, he has agreed to stay on as a contract employee through October 31st. So, that action requires a vote of the Board of Selectmen. I think this is a good opportunity for the town to obviously retain his knowledge as we go through the process of recruiting and hiring our first chief for the first time in 20 years. With that, I will open up to the board if any-
I just want to add that I really appreciate Chief Scoble agreeing to stay on beyond his retirement date so we can transition into the new Islington Fire Station under his leadership.
That says it all, I mean, that's it.
Okay. Have a motion?
I'll move that we accept Chief Scoble's letter of resignation or letter of retirement effective June 24th, 2017, and we authorize the town administrator to enter into a contract with Chief Scoble to continue as the interim fire chief through October 31st, 2017.
I'll second that motion.
Any debate questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? None. Okay. So, we want to go into the Islington Square redevelopment piece. My understanding is Mr. Petruzziello and Mrs. Zaka, you have some more slides from last time you want to add to and speak to. Is that where we want to go?
Let me just recap quickly, and then we'll move on to Mr. Zaka's slides. So, we were here on the 16th, and we went through several different -- went through the different options, and we mentioned that the task force had recommended option six. So, here's redevelopment option six that we had discussed. It has a proposed new CVS on the northwest side of the intersection and a proposed mixed-use building on the northeast side. The Wentworth Hall, Branch Library, and the Blue Heart Tavern are relocated to the east side of Washington Street, and a new community center and MMO Nursery School Building are placed where the CVS is now. These were just some of the renderings we went over at the last time. The first was the mixed-use building. This is the community center, MMO, and the CVS building. And then, just moving on to slides Mr. Zaka will go over, there's now a proposal to add additional parking to the site as well.
Thank you. For the record, I'm Peter Zaka. I'm an attorney representing Petruzziello Properties relative to the response to the request for proposal. Also here this evening is Giorgio Petruzziello, the principal of Petruzziello Properties. So, at the last meeting, we were asked to -- let me see if I'm going the right direction here. Whoops. Here we go. So, one of the things I believe Selectmen would want should ask was, was it possible to make the -- I'll use the word reconstruction of the community center all one height, meaning making it two -- make it look from Washington Street as if it's two stories. So, we have been able to do that. You see the little -- the lowest piece in the middle, everything to the left of that was shown in the original slides as three stories on the Washington Street side. Mike McKay put this together, who, by the way, apologizes, but it was between coming here or going to Italy, so he went to Italy. So, we were able to do this. I will tell you, it retains the same basic footprint, approximately 10,000 square feet of retail space on the bottom. On the other side of this, on the backside of the building, it would be three stories, and it would retain the 28 apartments. So, we did that, and the other thing was -- is this included?
Yeah.
So, the other thing that was mentioned sort of at the end of the meeting last time, Giorgio mentioned this, that he had put under agreement the property, I believe it's 277A Washington Street. What we've done is we've now incorporated that onto the project on the school street side. Actually allowed us to reallocate, redistribute, and better, I guess, serve the parking needs. So, the parking lot that you're now seeing on this side, which is the, we'll call it the school street side of the property, now contains -- these are approximate, these are architectural, they're not down to the engineering. We don't believe it'll change much one way or the other, up or down. That side now will have 95 parking spaces, serving all of the various uses. The other side of the property has 105. So, in total, the project would be supplying or providing 200 parking spaces. Later, we assume in response to questions, we did do a very rough, I use the word, parking analysis. We also ran some numbers in terms of looking at the assessments that the RFP included in terms of the lands and the properties that were involved in this request for proposal, comparing that to what we believe the town will end up with in terms of assessed value of buildings after the proposal. We also did a rough analysis on the current assessments of the properties owned by Petruzziello Properties and compared that to our estimated appraised values or assessed values of the properties after the proposal. And again, if those questions come up, we should be able to at least give you some conceptual responses to those questions. Thank you.
Can I just ask a question? Can you go back to the slide of the rendering from Washington Street? I think this is a driver, Nora, of a lot of questions about the height. So, my understanding of this is that when we talk about three stories from the parking lot, that's almost the current day height. There's a ground level today, there's the sanctuary level, and then there's open space for the sanctuary. But the ultimate height of the structure and this structure are equal.
Yeah. We asked that question to Mike McKay before he left, and the building that you see here is, he believes, going to be actually a little bit shorter in height, a little bit lower than your current community center.
I think what had happened was when we were talking three stories, it changed the perception. So, I just want to make sure we're -- when we're talking three stories, we're talking from standing in the current parking lot.
That's correct.
Right.
I'm going to ask if you can just give a recap of the parking spaces. If you don't have the numbers, then you can figure it out while we're going through this tonight. What we have now versus what is -- what exists today versus what exists after with this additional acquisition? You said a total of 200, so what's the lower number?
Yeah. So, currently, we believe in total, and I can give the breakdown if anybody's interested, but including the current parking serving the three properties owned by Petruzziello, this what I call the current CVS building, Cafe Diva building, and 9th School Street, as well as the municipal parking lot, Wentworth Hall, the other two parcels actually have no parking. There is currently a total of 98 parking spaces, serving all of those buildings. And I should point out, 11 of the parking spaces in the municipal lot have been specifically dedicated to Petruzziello Building, specifically Wild Blossom Block. 11 of those have been done. So, what we are proposing, as I indicated, we have 95 spaces on the school street side, and I believe it's 105 spaces on the east street side. So, we're going to two -- a total of 200 spaces, which in the aggregate is an increase of 102 parking spaces. To try to see what that means in terms of parking, in terms of parking demand, the Petruzziello Properties have -- the proposal is for approximately 22,800 of what I'll call retail space in total, plus the 28 apartments. We've always submitted, when we did the last project, we submitted to the planning board that you run the parking requirement for apartments at one space. These are one-bedroom units. I know a lot of people thought it should be 1.5. I think we ended up with 1.25. But for this analysis, we just ran it at the 1.5 parking spaces per apartment. There's one space for every, under your bylaw, one space for every 250 square feet of the retail space. So, the Petruzziello part of this proposal requires 134 parking spaces under the bylaw. If we add back in the 32 parking spaces from the municipal parking lot, that gives you 166 spaces. So, we've actually have an additional 34 parking spaces, which is, I guess, just almost another municipal parking lot, so.
Okay. Thank you.
You have other questions? Do you want to -- do you have other information? Can you answer some of her questions last time?
Yeah. Sure.
We have several slides in answer to the questions that were asked at the last meeting. One question, I believe, was about all of the other options and specifically about option seven. Option seven was not a -- one of the RFP options. Option seven is a proposal for what could come if none of the RFP options are considered. So, we made a comparison of option six to option seven. Option six is the proposal before you. It incorporates and develops all of the town parcels. It relocates and creates a larger CVS in the opposite corner. It proposes 20,000 square feet of commercial space, 28 one-bedroom apartment units. It renovates the current CVS building for recreation and youth and family services, as well as for MMO and puts a new tot lot there for MMO. It renovates and adds a basement to Wentworth Hall for the Islington Branch Library. It includes the historic restoration, the Blue Heart Tavern currently proposed for town space, provides an opportunity to widen and improve the intersection of East Street and Washington Street, and it would involve a value estimate of the value of the property minus the renovation cost. Option seven, the option that's outside of the RFP, would rely on the town parking for some of the required parking. It's not evident that CVS remains in the development. That would have to be discussed. It would propose 22,000 square feet of commercial space, proposes 40 one-bedroom housing units. There's no change in recreation or youth and family service space in the ICC, no change to the MMO space in the ICC, and no change to the Branch Library. It would result in the demolition of the Blue Heart Tavern, as there's no current place to put that. It would have little or no opportunity to widen and improve the intersection, and in this instance, the town would then still bear the cost of renovations to the ICC and Wentworth Hall. Another request Mrs. Hyde had had to do with the Islington Center land values. So, Mike Gillette created this chart. I don't know. I'll try to explain it, but if I run afoul of Mike, you can help me out here. What this does is it takes the Petruzziello Properties on the top and the Westwood Properties on the bottom, and there are copies for the audience, because I know this is very hard to read in the small print. If you look over to the right-hand side of the chart, it shows you the purchase prices. It shows you the value in the center, then the purchase price of each parcel. Some of the Petruzziello parcels were purchased in a lump for $4.2 million, and there was another one that was purchased individually for $500,000. And, let's see, another with the tailor shop for $525,000. The overall value of the Petruzziello Properties, the purchase price is $5,225,000, and the overall value is $3,165,350. When I say value, that's the tax assessed value currently. As far as the town properties, the overall tax assessed value is $2,487,950. But if we apply the per-square-foot value taken from the purchase price of the Petruzziello Properties, and we apply that to the town-owned properties, we come up with a value for the town-owned properties -- trying to see it on here -- of $3,30288. So, that's just for a comparison of the value of the Petruzziello Properties versus the existing town-owned properties. Another question had to do with the ICC revenues. So, Mr. Gillette prepared this chart, and what this shows is the revenue for the Islington Community Center over the past 10 years. The yearly income in the past year was $88,520, and over the last 10-year period, $861,200. Most of the revenue comes from the rental for, to MMO. There's also some rental received from AA groups and from other rentals. There's significant nonprofit use of the site as well for the Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, First Parish Rummage Sale, Daisy Troops, Cub Scouts, recreation programs, and several other uses. This chart shows the ICC expenses on an annual basis, and you can see that they're currently running at $81,350 per year. So, going back to the revenues of $88,520, the expenses of $81,350, it's -- the building is slightly more than breaking even right now. Then, we looked at the ICC capital needs assessment, which you have the full assessment in your packet. This is just the summary chart. Shows the work that needs to be done just to keep the building running as it is now, not to improve it, but just to replace the deteriorated systems, improve the electrical system, bring the restrooms up to handicapped accessibility to the greatest extent we can in the existing building. And for that, the overall six-year investment would be $1.446,111, and an overall 20-year capital cost of $1,833,653. The bulk of that would have to be spent in year one. $1.2833,943 would need to be spent altogether. And the reason for that is that the improvements that are most needed, the replacement of the roof, siding, windows, they necessitate code improvements as well. They cannot be done individually. Once we invest a certain amount in that building, we are required to bring it as close to meeting code as possible. And then, another item that Mrs. Hyde asked for was a timeline for project review if the Selectmen choose to go forward with this application. The first step would be a negotiation between the Board of Selectmen and the developer on a disposition agreement. We estimate that that would take approximately two months and would begin -- the chart here says May through July. I think today's May 31st, so it would actually be June through maybe early August. The planning board process could then begin. We estimate it would take two months for an application to be prepared, and probably about four months for it to run through the planning board review process, which would involve advertised public hearings and likely several iterations of the plans to get to the point where they may meet with planning board approval and achieve a special permit. So, we expect the preparation of the application to occur between July and September, and the review process with a hearing would begin around October and continue probably through February. At that point, a zoning board of appeals process would begin, and this is estimated to take between two and three months. So, that would be from November through December of 2017. The zoning board process would be needed if there was a desire for a drive-through for the CVS building, because a drive-through can only be approved with a Board of Appeals special permit. It would also be needed if any portion of the CVS, as currently shown on the plans, is on the tailership lot, tailor shop lot, because that tailor shop lot is zoned for residential and is currently a non-conforming property. It would require a special permit from the zoning board to change the existing non-conforming use to a new non-conforming use. There would also need to be an approval by the sewer commission. It's estimated that that would take approximately one month and could be achieved as early as December of 2017. The Conservation Commission would have jurisdiction for review. It's estimated that that would also take one month and would occur later in the process, probably February, March, 2018. And the final step would be the town meeting process. We're estimating four months from that. That would involve a planning board public hearing. It would involve a Finance and Warrant Commission, public hearings, and then it would go to town meeting. And town meeting would be asked to approve the transfer of the property to allow the development to go forward. At the time, we would bring the project to town meeting. It would be a fully baked proposal with all of the approvals in place.
Nora, the sewer commission, what is their responsibility? You said it would take only a month. What is it they need to do?
They would be approving the sewer, new sewer connections that are necessary.
Standard work.
Standard work, right. Nothing, nothing out of the ordinary.
And the ConComs work?
The Conservation Commission would be reviewing jurisdictional issues related to nearby wetlands. I don't believe there are any wetlands on the parcels that are involved in this process, but I believe there are wetlands on adjacent parcels that fall within 100 feet. There's also, they would be required to, if they are not within the jurisdiction of the wetlands, they would have to, the Conservation Commission would review this as a stormwater management proposal. Any property over 5,000 square feet is under the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission to make sure the stormwater management is appropriate.
So, the timeline, I think, is most helpful when we think about this in terms of the fact that some of this property was once privately held and over the years has been purchased. And as far back as 2015, the town entered into this process where we wound up with an RFP, and are at a juncture now where the Board, the Board of Selectmen, will deliberate and incorporate recommendations made by the Islington Square Task Force, look at the plans, and make our recommendation, which would include something that would go to the planning board. So, what we really are looking for is public input on what it is we like about these, this proposal or other proposals, and what will help us in our deliberation. So, with that, I'm happy to open it up. If anybody has any comment. Can you just identify yourself and your address, please?
Do we have the microphone? Yeah, we need to use the microphone. I'm June Cassidy. I just have two, two questions. On that map, can you just point where the tavern is and where Wentworth Hall is? So, both of them are on Washington Street now?
Yes.
Okay. And I was also curious about the exit from CVS parking lot onto School Street, because right now, you can only go in, and if you've ever waited at School Street going into the Washington Street exit, it's extreme, it would be extremely difficult to have cars coming out, because there's usually a line at the red light going all the way back. So, I'm just curious how that got switched around.
Comments on that, Nora? Because we've raised that as an issue. I know I've talked to you about that.
So, what you see here is a concept plan that shows the traffic orientation in that direction. I believe the intent was to line up the exit from the CVS with the exit from the post office building there. This would have to be reviewed by the planning board. These are architectural drawings, because it's just a concept plan. An engineered plan would have to be produced, and that's one of the things they would look at. They would look at whether or not there was a drive-through associated with this building and how that was configured, where the entrance to the parking lot would be, where the exit would be. This architectural drawing shows two entrances off of Washington Street, both of which are also exits, and it shows an exit only onto School Street, but it has not been engineered yet. So, that's something that if the Selectmen choose to go forward with this, the engineered plans would be developed and reviewed by the planning board with their, their peer-review engineer to take a look at that and to see if it works. And it, it may change. Locations of buildings may change, shapes of buildings may change, the orientation of the parking spaces, and the entrances and exits may change. We're just at a concept level, so I think what, what the Selectmen are being asked to do is to look at the pieces as they fit together for a large-picture view of this and determine if that's something that they're interested in pursuing. We're not asking for you to, to accept the plan as shown. It's just an early concept plan.
While you're up there, though, Nora, just to piggyback on the question that was asked, how do we, how would the planning board potentially handle preventing this from being a Washington Street cut-through to go up School Street? Or times of day when that, you know, taking the left turn Washington Street to East Street is not an easy maneuver now, how do we keep people from looping around to come down School Street to the intersection, for instance?
I, I think that's something we'd have to look at with traffic engineers and see if there are hours of operation that they, they use changes, or if the configuration is reversed, and that's an entrance and the exit onto Washington Street. I don't really have an answer to that yet. Until the parking lot is engineered, we just don't know what works best.
But that's the type of thing that the planning board would have to address.
That's the type of thing the planning board is, is charged with doing. So, they would review plans and see if it makes sense. They would hire a traffic consultant to review the developer's submitted traffic plan to make sure that it made sense and to make sure it was not only safe, but the best configuration for the traffic at that intersection. The goal would be not to worsen the functioning of that intersection.
Anybody else over here? Go ahead, Trevor.
Good evening. My name is Trevor Lobenstein. I'm the chairman of the planning board and also was a member of the, of the task force. I live at 375 Flatbord Tree. I had a question. I'm not sure who could answer it. Probably Nora, if anybody in the room can. The, the notion that we could manipulate how Washington Street and School Street and East Street intersect as part of this plan and potentially widen or add lanes, create turning lanes, that sort of thing, how does that process get initiated, do we think, given that it is, is it a state road? Is that correct? And does that have any impact, do we think, on the overall timeline of approval?
So, Washington Street used to be a state road, and when it was reconstructed, the town took it over. It's now a town road. East Street, I believe, is a county road. Is that correct?
It's a county layout town road.
So, we do have control over that. The planning board would review those plans. I envision at this point that the idea would be to cut back on the intersection on the side where the ICC is now, and possibly add to the intersection on the side where the fire station is, if that's necessary through either pavement marking or a different type of pavement to-
Delineate?
Yes, to delineate the, a tighter, you want a tighter turn, but a wider opening.
But we can't impact the fire trucks coming out of there.
No, no. So, we would not be changing the fire, the fire apron. We wouldn't be changing that, but we may be adding some type of pavement, either a delineated pavement or a striped pavement in the roadway. So, that's something that the engineers would be asked to look at, something to make that intersection function better. We would also be looking at re-signalization of the intersection. I know there's an interest in, in looking at whether or not a dedicated left turn going south on Washington Street and turning to go east on, East Street would be warranted. So, that's something we would also ask the engineers to look at, and that would all be done in the timeframe that we discussed for the planning board approval. So, we would be asking the developers, traffic engineer, to investigate how that would be done, and we would be asking the planning board's peer-review- done, and we would be asking the Planning Board's peer review to take a look at that. If there are intersection changes, then they would come back to the selectmen as roadway commissioners as well.
My name is Nadha Milasov-Lavich Fabrizio, and I live on Webster Street. I have a couple of questions.
Nora.
I'm sorry. Nora, you had option six and option seven. Can you get that back up there, please?
Is this option six?
No, no. When you had the side-by-side telling us something wouldn't happen.
Yes.
Option seven, let's see. Not evident that CVS remains in the development. My question pertains to the lease term. The last time we were here, and there was a discussion, I think Mr. Petruzziello, I apologize if I'm messing up your name, you indicated that it's a long-term lease, but then Selectman Walsh asked the term of the lease, and I think we were told it was a five-year term. To me, I'd like to know what justifies a long-term lease. Five years is not a long term, and I'm concerned that if we go through all of this and put up a CVS with a drive-through, what's going to happen if CVS pulls out? That's one of my questions.
Okay. Well, why don't we take all your questions, then we'll get responses.
Okay. My other question with respect to, I'm sorry, I don't know your name. You were talking about incorporating everything with respect to traffic. Yesterday, I drove up Washington Street to take a right on School Street and then a left turn into a disabled parking space. I took the right turn, and then there was an entire line of traffic coming down School Street towards East Street. And I sat there with my directional on, and when the light, oh, before the light changed and allowed the traffic to come off of School Street towards East Street, people behind me were beeping, like I shouldn't have been there waiting to park my car. So I think that needs to be addressed in that intersection. It just doesn't work. And then my third question is University Station. When that whole thing came into being and it was developed, I see Canton Street, beautification, flowers, and speed humps, and I'd like to know, are we going to get that in the Islington neighborhood, the speed humps? Because my concern is the cell phone application Waze, W-A-Z-E, is already redirecting people off of 128 to the side roads here, Washington Street and whatever else. And if you take a right on Cobley or you take a right on Hooper, that just brings you back out around. So my concern is we're going to have a lot of traffic in our neighborhood, people cutting through. Because right now, when you come from Gay Street, no, yeah, Gay Street towards Norwood on Washington Street, there's a line of traffic. I mean, it goes all the way down to this Islington Village proposal. So people that are going towards Norwood can potentially take rights on Cobley and Hooper and cut through and cut everybody off down Dean Street. So I'm really concerned about the traffic, because right now, people are either lost in the neighborhood or they live there. And, you know, there's a lot of kids, and I see it. I mean, I see, I know we're not getting direct, but I see people's nannies flying through my neighborhood. This woman takes care of children, and every day I see her, and she's flying through the neighborhood. Now, she knows the neighborhood, but these people that are potentially be cutting through, I mean, it's an accident waiting to happen. So I'd like to know if we will be incorporating speed humps and beautification or something to slow people down.
So let me take your questions in order.
Okay.
Do you want to address the CVS term?
I don't think I can remember them, but...
No, I have them. I have the CVS term. Let's take the CVS term first, then we'll talk a little bit about traffic.
Thank you.
In terms of the CVS, just so we're clear, the current CVS where it is, and I think this is with their options, have a lease until, assuming they exercise all their options, to 2023. If CVS relocates across the street, there'll be a new lease, and that's the CVS with a drive-through. The initial term of that lease would be 20 years, and then they would have at least two options following that. I believe the options are for five years each, so in theory, they could have a, be there for 30 years at the new point. In terms of traffic, traffic is always a concern. We will need to do, as part of the Planning Board process, we need to engage our traffic engineer. The Planning Board will define, or their consultant will define, the study area. Our traffic engineer goes out and does existing counts, and then he will do a, what we call a no-build, which is if none of this happens, what is the, all your intersections going to look like? Usually either five years or 10 years out. That's called the no-build situation. We then do, through, I always call it traffic engineering is pot science and pot art, they go to a IT handbook. You look up the potential, the uses that are being proposed. That provides, through years of study, they can tell you, you know, CVS of this size will generate X number of trips in, X number of trips out. They will then project for that same time period the so-called build conditions, and what happens to all of your intersections, and then they have to also allocate where that traffic will be going. And when I say look at the intersections, they do it in terms of, I mean, everybody knows your current intersection, people get up here one after the other, and no one disagrees with them. There are lines backed up. It could be a number of solutions to that, but they look at whatever that level of service is of that intersection, level of service is greater, like a report card A through F, simplifying things. And then they say with the so-called no-build, if we don't do any of this, what happens? And then your build, and the build should not only not be worse, but your build should be to improve over what the current situation is in terms of traffic safety, number one, and traffic movement, number two. So at this point, I can't tell you what that will be until we get before the Planning Board.
And I do want to, I don't know where she went. Who asked the question? Oh, okay. I mean, it's, once that traffic plan is made, it's not then set. Similar to University Station, there was some, there was some consequences to traffic and the flow and where things were changing and where people may have been cutting through, and we continue to develop the plan. So that's what you see when you drive down Canton Street. That would be similar to this. It's not that the plan is set and then it never changes, will react if there's problems. Does that answer your questions?
I think so. You don't know where the problem is, you hope people can find it, right?
Anybody else over here?
Hi. My name is Debbie Conian Strasserav.
I can't really hear you. I'm sorry.
Debbie Conian Strasserav. I have a couple of comments first and then a couple of questions. I apologize I'm a little late, so I may have missed some of the information. A lot of the concerns have to do with the parking, which I'm assuming will be addressed at a Planning Board stage, maybe, as we've just been discussing, so I won't hammer on that. I think that I see the costs and everything of the ICC that was put here, and it's really hard, I think, to come up with an actual number for what it would cost to appear the ICC without putting out a RFP for those, so I think that's sort of on the back burner right now in terms of validity. My questions are, Nora, at the last meeting, you gave the height of the ICC. What was that?
Actually, I don't know the actual height of the ICC. I know it is higher than the 36 feet maximum, but I couldn't tell you if it's 43 feet.
So if we go back to this, what is that? What do you call it? The number six proposal?
Yes.
So can you do the big buildings side-by-side? You know, so you can see the front of them.
Just this?
Yeah, that, yeah. So it looks like those buildings beside it are the same height? Are going to be the same height?
It looks to me like the building that's proposed on the left is slightly lower than the building on the right. It's the recreation of the ICC.
Okay. So my question is, what's the actual height of the recreation going to be?
But Deb, I think you may have missed this part of the discussion earlier.
That's why I just said I missed that one.
Yeah. So this rendering, what this shows, what the building shows, is that this will not be any higher. In fact, it may be slightly lower than the existing ICC structure.
Right. But what...
But we don't, none of us know the actual height of the ICC.
So then my assumption, sorry, is that it's going to end up needing a special permit or waiver or something, because it will be higher than the bylaw of 36 feet? Is that correct?
I don't think that's true. In fact, I think the proportion on the law would be 12 feet.
Okay. Okay. So we don't know the height of that yet. Okay. My next question is, and I don't, apologize, I don't know the legal term for this. I know that when a builder comes in and wants to do something for the town, they can do something that will benefit the community, and I've heard rumors that there's something about an ice skating rink or something. Is there any validation to that?
Your lips to God's ears. I'm actually the driver of this discussion around pursuing a rink, but no, the developer's not funding a rink.
So is there any sort of incentive that's being offered that the community should be aware of?
It's a good question. I mean, I'd love to hear, do you have any suggestions of types of mitigation we should pursue?
No, not yet. But that's just a rumor that, because I think it's one, if it is proposed, it's one that has to benefit the entire community versus just a select few.
I agree, but can we put the rumor, can we put the rumor to bed about the rink? Yeah, because I'll get blamed for it.
You can do it right now. So I guess my final question is, it seems kind of backward to be doing all this without having a fiscal impact study done yet. I don't know. I mean, if I'm going to buy a property, I want to have all my checks lined up before I go ahead and do that, so...
So I believe that we've looked at the values of the properties. When we put this out for RFP, it had to meet certain economic conditions, which it has met.
Mm-hmm. In terms of a gain for us versus...
Nora, the Planning Board process, if I'm not mistaken, will involve hiring a consultant to do a fiscal impact just along the lines of what I think Ms. Conant was mentioning. And we talked about it last time. I know I raised an issue saying we need to have a sense of what's going on, which is why we have this added information.
That's right. So as part of the Planning Board supplemental, the applicant submits engineered plans, traffic study, drainage study, fiscal study. What you can have before that, before you make your decision, is just a rough analysis of the town's condition before and the town's condition after. And the numbers that Mike Gillette provided to you are to help you get a sense of that. The current value of the town-owned parcels, the current value of the privately-owned parcels, and then you need to get a sense of how much the town would acquire in the means of the Wentworth Hall relocation, and if the Blue Heart Tavern is also in the mix as becoming a town property. So you would combine the cost of the land and buildings you own after the project is complete compared to what you own today, and that's how you would determine if the balance met the goals of the RFP. And then in addition to that, you would look at the tax ramifications of the overall development.
So there's another variable that has to be factored in, though. If we continue to hold, we have to add in the incremental cost to be able to hold.
Correct.
So there's value plus cost.
That's correct.
Associated with it, so...
Right. So you have the value of the buildings we have today, and you have the cost of operating the buildings we have today, and you would compare that to the value of the buildings you would have at the end, fully renovated buildings, and the cost of holding and using those buildings. And then you would add to that the tax revenue that's generated now by the commercial buildings and the tax revenue that's expected to be generated by the post-construction privately-owned buildings. And then put that all together. But they're estimates at this point, and there's no way to know the final numbers until we have engineered plans. We can't get to engineered plans if the selectmen are not interested in going forward with this.
The similar question came up at the last meeting, and we had put some very rough numbers. I apologize for not having slides. We assume you would be responding. We can, would be more than willing to commit to writing, but as Nora indicated, there are actually two separate fiscal questions. The first one has to do with what the RFP required and also what the Islington Task Force strongly recommended, which is that they have to see at least a value-for-value in terms of the assessments before and after of the town-owned property, if not an increase. We use the numbers that were in the RFP, which are basically come from your Board of Assessors, and the four parcels, my numbers may be a couple of thousand dollars off one way or the other that Nora had put up, but the four parcels, as put forth in the RFP, totaled $2,575,000. That's the town parcels. One of those, I should point out, is Wentworth Hall, which was valued at 750, but we're not, no one's getting that building. I just throw that out because the land itself was 425,000. In the proposal before you, you're getting a renovated Wentworth Hall. It'll have the basement, the elevator, et cetera, up to today's code, and our architect put a value of that of 1.2 million. We would be totally renovating, putting a basement, and giving the town the Blue Heart Tavern, and that was estimated at 1 point, excuse me, 1 million. And the 6,000 square feet of new community space was, is estimated at 2.4 million. So we had buildings alone that the town would get at 4,600,000. Now, in addition to that, which is not in these figures, so we try to be conservative, at least for this evening's purpose, is you're getting the municipal parking lot, which had a value on it for the RFP purposes of 600,000. At the end of the day, the town will still have a municipal parking lot with a minimum of 32 parking spaces. So in theory, I could add 600,000 to the 4.6, but I, we just, again, didn't do it to be conservative. Likewise, what I'm giving you is values of buildings, and we all know, you know, where the Blue Heart Tavern is and where the library is going, the town is getting land as well. So the 4.6, again, doesn't include any of those. So if I round off to just 5 million, because when you throw those other things in, we believe the town will be seeing a doubling in the value of the town buildings. Again, I point that out only because the RFP required that we do that, and the Islington Task Force did it. The second part of the fiscal analysis, which is a complete analysis, is what does this do to the town in terms of its, almost its day-to-day operation? Again, we ran four properties, that Petruzziello property either currently owns or including the, what I call the Cohen property at 277A, and took the town assessments for those four properties. And that's just slightly under 2.5 million dollars for those four properties. And then we put values. Now, I got to tell you, a developer always tells me to get up here and give low numbers because they're afraid the assessors are listening. I, of course, because it makes it look bad, I want to give higher numbers. So you can guess where these numbers come out, because I usually lose those battles. But when we're done, we're estimating the CVS building to be worth $8 million, the mixed-use development to be worth approximately 7 million. Our 6,000 square feet of new retail space, which is the space that's in the proposal, there is actually 12,000 square feet of new space. 6,000 is going to the town. 6,000 is being retained by Petruzziello. We estimated that at 2.4 million, but I got to tell you, if in fact the MMO, which has to make a decision as to whether or not they are willing to stay and locate in the area, would probably negotiate with Petruzziello a lease below fair market value. So the 2.4 is assuming that it was a fair market value lease. And then there's an additional, at the very end, there's an additional small piece of retail at 18,000. So we have the assessments going from 2.5 million currently owned by Petruzziello to a little over 16 million. Again, this is now a mix of commercial and residential, but even if you ran it all at the lower residential number from a, just a tax revenue generator, it is a significant and will be a significant increase to the town. We understand there's a second half of the equation that I'm not putting out here, which is what happens to the town's costs? And generally speaking, because the buildings are... are new, sprinkled, you know, state-of-the-art, we have found, in most fiscal analysis that we have ever done, show that the increase is not dramatic at all in terms of the commercial space. They also run it relative to the, to the residential. And of course, the argument is whether or not there is an impact, the big impact, as you know, is on school costs. It has been our history that in one-bedroom units, my client who owns 180 of them, how many units do you have? Approximately 180 units, not in, not in Westwood, has never had a school-aged child locate in a one-bedroom unit. Is it possible? It's possible, but we believe it's highly unlikely. And therefore, the school costs usually are not a factor or a very minimal factor. But there is that other side. So there is going to be a dramatic increase, we believe, in revenues. Clearly, the entire fiscal analysis will give you what are the offsetting expenses. We still think it's going to be a major net gain to the town from that perspective as well.
If I could just add to that. So once a fiscal report is actually produced by the developer and submitted to the planning board, the planning board also hires a fiscal analyst as one of their peer review consultants, who reviews all that information and comes up with an independent analysis of the fiscal benefits and costs to the town.
I have a series of questions, too. Some of them are pretty minor. One of them is Stratford Street. It shows us a boulevard. Is there going to be any change to that?
Shows us what?
Stratford Street.
Shows us what?
A boulevard, almost, on the map, and it's actually a dirt road. Will we need change to that?
So this plan shows the layouts of all of the roads, and so Strad, that's Stratford Street and Stratford Drive, that's their layout. There's not a proposal as part of this to change those roads.
Fine, thank you. Just to complete the financial analysis of the ICC building, the town does get a lot of use from it for its own departments. Is there any way of monetizing that to complete the picture of how it stands now? I mean, we get dollars from MMO, so that's easy to quantify. But there's other uses on, of the building by town departments that would otherwise have to be facilitated somewhere else. So just to flesh out that analysis that was done, could we get some measure of that, of that value?
I think we could assess the, the value of the space. I would just point out that the space is in the before proposal, and the same space is in the after proposal for those town uses. So the, the proposal includes new community space for youth and family services and recreation of the same, the same value as the existing space, and to be used in a similar manner.
Actually, comparison, for improved spaces that were improved to fit the function they're being used for. Currently, the building has not been renovated interiorly, using family services, using the offices that were there, whether they're appropriately sized or appropriately located or not. The space that would then get created, as the old CVS building would be, would be designed in a way that youth and family services would be run more effectively in that space.
I can see the value of that, that might be an improvement. But just to get, the schedule that was given to us, which shows incoming, you know, slight profit, that profit would be bigger if there was any allocation for the services that are actually given to the town, have been over the past 10 years.
I think that we could make an estimate as to what the value, having space there versus going up markedly, and wanting to maintain space, that there's going to be a black dot.
And then on the other side, we'd also then want to add on the new basement space that would be proposed in Wentworth Hall, where we have no effective basement space today.
I would be interested to know if it's, if somebody could tell me at this point in time in the, in the process, how Westwood would pay. Because I know that in the June 20, June 16, we spawned to the RFP, the developer developed value in some buildings, gave it back to the town, which it sounds like he's going to do again. But as I looked at it, the library, for instance, was to be moved across the street. But we own the library, it is what it is. It's picked up, it's moved across the street for the purposes of the project, not for the purposes of the town of Westwood. And it's placed, it has to be placed on a new foundation, but we had an old foundation, so I don't know why Westwood would pay for that new foundation. It seemed to me that the, the way that the developer charged back the library to us included the entire value, most of which was actually, was Westwood's value.
I think the-
Do you understand what I'm saying?
No, I think the, I think the value is the rehab.
The additional, the-
The rehab and the additional space.
Right.
So I think what we would look at is the, the assessed value of the library building in its new location, including renovations to the, the, up, the first floor and the new basement, and compare that to the value of the building in its current location.
Okay. That sounds like a step forward from the last presentation we got in June 2016. But I'd just like to make sure that Westwood doesn't end up receiving any value, something it had already owned for the human.
Yeah, let's do it.
Question, the capital expenditures that are going into the ICC if this proposal did not go through, is there any way of staggering that or dividing it in such a way that it would trigger the, the-
There's not. The roof alone triggers the code upgrade. Just, just replacing the roof brings the investment in the building to over the minimum threshold that would require us to upgrade to code. So that's one of the reasons that no work, no significant work has been done on the building since we purchased it. I think we spent maybe $50,000, replaced a boiler, and did maintenance work, but we haven't done the significant upgrades that are required. Because once we do a portion of it, either replacing the roof or the windows or improving the handicapped accessibility, then we also have to do the electrical improvements and bring the building as close to meeting code as possible, noting that it would, it will still be, it will still function in the same manner, which is an inefficient building.
Expanding on that.
We need to be at a microphone if you're going to talk more.
Expanding on that. During the process of the task force, there were serious questions asked about what is the value of the improvements. So the town had done an assessment with its own staff, its facility people. However, we did not feel that that would be appropriately believed, being prepared by staff. So we hired a professional to inspect the buildings and to do the assessment of the actual cost of bringing them up the, up the grade, and only to make the buildings more functional. So to make the space more functional, as I described a few minutes ago, was not included. To put an elevator that's required in both of the buildings to make the basements and the double floors in the ICC usable were not included. We're just talking about mechanical space, the condition, the roof, the siding, and things like that, come to one point, almost 1.3 million for the ICC, and another 150,000 for Wentworth Hall. In addition to that, the developer's talking about taking it even further than that. And that's why he comes up with numbers that are exceeding. And as Nora explained, we asked the, the professional to, to spread those costs over time, and the bulk of the cost, 1.2 million, was upfront in the first year. It's improvements we should have made by now, but we've been putting it off until we've made a commitment as to what we're going to do with the building.
I appreciate that. That's more, more valuable information, really.
There is a study that people can look at, too, that we have, that shows the detailed costs, if anybody wants it.
The final question I have is, the thing that really has concerned me all along, and that's the total number of new potential apartments in the two, the High Street and Washington Street flexible districts. And I just did some rough math on that, and I took option number seven, where the developer said he could have X number of apartments, and there was a certain amount of space that he used it. So I, you know, came up with a figure that a certain amount of space for each apartment. And when I worked through the math, it would come to a total of between the two sides of town, 778. And I made them two-bedroom apartments, because I didn't think that, there's not many single people to fill up the apartments. So that's what I see as a problem, not for this particular piece of the development, but for the ongoing development. Because apparently, we have no leverage as long as the developer plays by the rules, there's certain zoning in place, and they can develop as they see fit. And even though some of the large landowners are things like banks and a supermarket and whatnot, as well as some undeveloped properties, we all know that banks go through cycles and leave, and even supermarkets do the same thing. So there's a potential.
I missed, the 778 was your calculation of what?
Just my, my calculation of the total number of apartments-
Total number of apartments?
That would be, could be developed in the two flexible districts.
I, I don't know how you calculate that, but I, I would estimate a much lower number. You have to keep in mind that a special permit can only contain 50% of the overall square footage of the entire project as housing units. So, so it's limited by that factor. It's also limited by a floor area ratio, which is the maximum floor area that could be put on a lot. It's limited by the maximum impervious surface coverage on a lot, and it's limited by the ability to provide parking. So I think the number of residential units in the two districts combined would be less than 200, and maybe significantly less than 200.
If I came up with 778, and you came up with 200, that is a big difference.
Yeah, and I'd also, one other thing I just want to point out is that every apartment or condo unit, every residential unit, would only be allowed by special permit, and the planning board does have discretion. So special permit uses are not allowed by right. You have to meet the criteria. If you can meet the criteria, the planning board has to approve it. They can't arbitrarily deny it. But one of the criteria is the, a review of how it affects the town as a whole. And if the planning board found a negative effect, they would not have to issue special permits.
So if the planning board had decided to vote against this, truly seriously, the developers' projects, they could have stopped them?
They, they could if they found that there was a negative effect to the, to the town or the overall neighborhood. They'd have to make that finding.
That makes me happy, because the town does have some level of control. It's interesting that if we had created a situation where enough people wanted to develop their properties, we would have been stuck with a massive number of apartments. And I think that completes my questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you want to say something?
No, my covered it. Thank you.
Mr. Delay.
Hi, Bill Delay, School Street. Are we deciding on option six and, or seven? Is that the, I'm, I'm, I thought the task force gave you option six, but now we're, we've got option six and seven, so are you making a choice between those two?
There was a question at the last meeting about option seven versus option six. So that's why you saw a slide tonight that had both of them compared. What the, what the, does that make sense?
It wasn't to choose one or the other, it was to understand.
Okay. I, I just saw a whole scale of comparisons between option six and option seven, so I thought maybe something changed. No, okay, still six, okay.
Mary Layden, 136 School Street. I just have a couple of things. One is the 28 apartments. I look at the 12 apartments, and that's a very dense building on a spot. So 28 apartments is at least twice the size, so I'm afraid that building's going to be very dense, okay? The other thing is the CVS building with the MMO and the community space. But that'd be, that'd be a shared building with the builder, and I don't know if that would be a good idea. I think the town should own its buildings, the land around it, and its parking. I don't know about sharing. Okay, so maybe I'm wrong about that community space in the MMO building.
I think that's a point that if the selectmen decide it's worth pursuing this proposal, would need to be negotiated. So the proposal, as it stands right now, shows a, a single building that would have town-owned spaces and MMO space. The developer's proposing owning the land and owning the portion that would be leased to MMO if they're interested in leasing it, and having the town own the, its, its building.
Like a condo ownership?
Essentially, essentially a zero lot line. So, like a condo. So that's what's being proposed, and that's what the, if the Board of Selectmen is interested in pursuing that, can be discussed in a disposition agreement.
Okay. Another thing is the Heart Tavern. I myself, and I don't know many people that really care whether the building is there or not, so if it's a million dollars being in the equation to keep that building, I don't really know if people are that interested in keeping it, that I know. There might be a lot of other people that are.
What is the intended, what, at the task force level, what was the discussed potential use of the Blue Heart Tavern?
The task force didn't get beyond the fact that it was being proposed as a town property. It could be used for office space, for some type of community use, perhaps for additional library services, but they didn't get into that. The idea was for the selectmen to decide if that's something that you're interested in receiving. Perhaps you're not. Perhaps the Blue Heart Tavern is better remaining in public use, as opposed to, I'm sorry, in private use as opposed to town use. So that's another item that the Board can negotiate.
Sir in the back.
Dennis Cronin. I, I'm going to talk about something that I haven't heard anyone mention yet, and that is the architecture. I'm no expert in architecture, but when I look at the buildings that have been put up so far, I'm certainly not a fan of it. In fact, the, the apartment building there frankly reminds me of some old tired building out in the western part of the state where those old industrial properties are. But as I, as I've driven around recently, I've taken note of some of the areas I've been in, even Dedham Center, Wellesley Hills, even going down 109, other recent buildings. There's more and more red brick. And frankly, I favor more red brick, and everybody has different tastes. But red brick is lasting, and the town has built buildings that way now. On 109, there are more buildings like that, and they're lasting, they're more elegant. And, and that, to me, is Boston. That's, that, to me, is something that is more appealing. I don't know how other people feel, but I just wanted to express my opinion. And we don't know what, from the pictures, what this new is going to look like. But what's there now, if it's similar to that, I, I don't find it very attractive. I would like to add also, I would hope in the post office building, they're going to put red brick along below the windows, because already it's, the paint's chipping and it's dirty. And I noticed in the apartment building, they have put red brick along the bottom, and that's certainly more appealing.
So in regard, in regards to the post office building, if you notice, we're actually starting the hardscape up front. And the reason why the two-foot of brick hasn't been done yet, because we have to install the sidewalks in the asphalt, then put the two-foot brick all the way around.
Does that help? Did you want to say what he said? Anybody else?
Does that help? Did you want to see what he said? Anybody else?
Mary Ann Cardi Willett Circle. Would it be possible to get a breakdown of the parking the way it is now for spaces, and then what's proposed? You know, if you can pull that together, I mean, I don't expect it now, but it would be easier.
On a diagram.
Thank you very much, yes. And just a comment on the apartments. I remember people saying to me that people in Islington don't want apartments, but the reality is that we have a lot of apartments in Islington. Right on Washington Street, we have an apartment building. We have a couple of mixed use. We have a number of two and three family apartments. We have 43 apartments there, plus the 12, the 12 new ones going in, and then we want to add another 28. I guess my concern is, I look at University Station where they put up 350 apartments, and 100 of them are empty. So do we need that many apartments? I understand it makes the project feasible for the developer, but do we really need that many? Thank you.
Hi, Debbie Conan again. I just, I'm having a hard time comprehending this. So the buildings that we own now, the library, the Blue Heart Tavern, and, we don't own that, okay. So any of those things that get moved to, are we all going to have zero lots, just the building we'll own, and we'll have to pay him lease, I mean rent? I don't understand the whole process in terms of the library, if it gets moved over to his property. Does it then, do we pay him rent?
The proposal as it stands now calls for Wentworth Hall, the Islington Branch Library, and the Blue Heart Tavern to be moved onto town-owned property. So the town would own the land, and the town would own the buildings, and the town would own additional land behind them for parking spaces. So the municipal parking lot that we own now would be partially occupied by those two buildings, and in exchange, while we get the buildings moved and renovated, placed on that land, and then we would get additional land in the back there with additional parking. So we would end up with land equivalent to the municipal lot now, containing at least as many spaces, and the land and the buildings for the Blue Heart Tavern and Wentworth Hall. And then the proposal on the east side of Washington Street would be a zero lot line proposal, where the town would be offered just the building and not the land. But that's up to the selectmen, if you decide to go forward with this, to negotiate and decide if that's the way you want to consider this, or if you'd like to see changes.
So also too, on the building where the ICC will be reconstructed, is there any way we can see a picture of what that side apartment building's going to look like? Because I don't think it's going to be as pretty as the front.
I don't think there is.
There is. There's a back to it. So it's going to be like an L-shaped building going down East Street.
Right. So what you have right now, the concept plan, we only have an illustration, a rendering for the Washington Street side of that building. The idea is that the East Street side would look, at least the portion that's at the intersection, would look like the current building looks now. So it would have the pediment in the front. The rear view, the view that's facing the parking lot, we don't have yet. We know that the proposal would be that that portion of the building would be a three-story building. There would be parking below, commercial, and then two floors of residential. These are just concept plans. And to get to the point where we have more developed architectural plans, there would need to be a decision to move forward into negotiation. I don't think that we would be asking the developer to spend additional funds developing plans unless we know that there's a likelihood that they'll move forward. So I would say that would come at the disposition agreement discussion stage.
So if they do move forward, and I'm looking at that, those parking spaces, it looks like they're not going to have that 20-foot buffer that's required, is that correct, to the residential?
So that's up to the planning board to review. What the planning board does now, with all of the developments they look at, they require maintenance of a 20-foot buffer where there's a buffer already there. In that case, the lot line behind CVS and behind Wentworth Hall goes right up to the property line, and it's paved right up to the property line. So there is no buffer there now. It would be up to the planning board to decide if they thought that it was important to add a buffer there, but I have not seen any decisions that the planning board has issued on any other properties where they placed a buffer where none had been.
I promised my husband I would not speak, but Chris Preveter, 16 Dean Street. A couple of questions. There was something said about the Blue Heart Tavern, the land that that is currently on would be transferred to the town. So what will become town land that is
So here's the Blue Heart Tavern, and that's shown along with Wentworth Hall on what is currently the municipal lot. The municipal lot comes right around here. As you can see, there are no longer 30 spaces on that land. That's the municipal lot, 31 spaces to replace what's there today. So the proposal would be that the town would also receive this area back here as a municipal parking lot. And the parking that's in between those would be associated with the CVS building.
Okay, so in, can't think of the word, but the result being that the town will now own the least desirable parking lots in the far back of the lot. Is that right?
Well, the proposal right now, at a concept stage, is that that lot that's in the back would be proposed to be given to the town. And it's adjacent to other town-owned land, and it is closest to the ball field, the school, street, playground, and ball field, which is where we have the greatest shortage of parking now.
Okay. What else is, will be owned or is owned by the town for parking spaces in that whole area?
That's it. So the proposal right now is to replace the buildings and the parking spaces that we currently own. So we currently own the ICC, which has no parking. We currently own Wentworth Hall, which has a minimum amount of parking, and we currently own the municipal lot. Under the proposal, we would own the Blue Heart Tavern, the relocated Wentworth Hall, the parking area around that building, the parking area in the back, and the building only on the community center side, on the east side of the street, with no additional parking. We would have access to parking for the municipal center on that side, but it would not be owned parking. It would be parking that came along with the, I guess, it would be similar to a condominium. So we would have the right to use the parking.
And I don't understand that concept. Can you explain that, please?
I cannot.
So why use the concept if you don't know what it means?
What concept?
I'm telling you, the proposal is for a condominium-type structure. The selectmen, if they choose to go forward, would negotiate a disposition agreement, and that would be drawn out in that agreement. So that would require town council to take a look at that and make sure that it made sense. Normally, when you own a condominium, you own within your walls, and you have rights to use parking spaces, you have rights to use outside areas, but you don't own the land that they sit on. So that's what's proposed here. Whether or not, that's what the selectmen accept will, remains to be seen.
So the condo-type proposal is for the Islington Library after it's moved over?
No. It's only for what's shown.
It's the old CVS building.
Right. The old CVS building. You see here, it says MMO community space. That building, picture it divided in half. One half of the building would be community space, the other half, if they're interested, would be MMO space. The building itself and the land that it sits on are proposed to be owned by the developer, and the town would have the right to the condominium space that is the community center. The town would not, under the current proposal, own the MMO space, nor own the outside of that. But that's what's proposed. That's not necessarily what the selectmen would accept.
But this would mean that we are now leasing from the developer.
No, that would be ownership.
No, not leasing. We would own it.
Well, condo means ownership. It doesn't mean that's what we're going to pursue, but condominium is an ownership structure, not a lease agreement.
Okay, but, right, but developer owns the.
No, we would.
The building itself, right?
We own within the wall.
The proposal's for the town to own the interior of the building.
And then finally, on East Street, there's something that goes down in the middle, opposite the ball field. Is that a divider right on the street, that white thing? Or is that just the line?
That's there now.
That's just the?
That separates the Little League parking lot from the roadway.
Okay. And so what parking spaces would be available, because we all know that the people using the ball field cross over East Street and use parking spaces. So what parking spaces would, after this proposal, be available for all the families and kids that use that field?
The same as are available now. So right now, we, the town owns parking spaces that are associated with Wentworth Hall on that side of the street. There are also parking spaces associated with CVS. You'll notice when you go into that lot, most CVS customers actually park in the Wentworth Hall spaces, and many baseball families park in those spaces as well. The community center that's proposed to go on that side of the street has parking associated with it. That parking would be the same number of spaces that are available to the town-owned property there now, would be the same number that's available after this, and the same number that would be available to those families. It's not an ideal situation now, and this proposal does not better the Little League situation. There's a need for additional parking for the Little League fields. This proposal does not add that additional parking. It leaves the parking in the same state that it is now. It's a neutral.
Thank you.
On the parking, you pointed out that the town would own that parking lot in the back. You could consider it as, I believe, as overflow parking, similar to what we have at the library, and is shared with the old Colburn Building. The parking around both buildings, the library and the Colburn Building, are used by the library and the Colburn Building on a shared basis. And way in the back, there's a lot that got created where the Colburn School once sat while the library was being constructed, that got constructed more as overflow parking. And that's a similar notion to what we're talking here. So it wouldn't mean that the municipal users of those buildings would have to park there and walk that distance. They would be parked in and amongst the parking spaces in the front. But if the need was there, it could go all the way back.
Right. I would expect that if the selectmen go forward with this, they would negotiate shared parking agreements on both sides of Washington Street. So all the users of all the buildings have the ability to use whatever parking spaces are available. That's what's done in practice right now. So if you go to the ball field and you park either in CVS or the Wentworth Hall parking spaces, if you go to the playground and the spaces are full, and you park in the tailor shop area or near the post office building, that's the way we use it now, but there are no negotiated parking easements in place. So I would imagine that it would be prudent to have cross agreements that allowed all users to use all spaces. And this, I think, at the beginning of the meeting, for anyone who was here earlier, what was important was noted that the proposal calls for 200 spaces. They're in this, in an area that there existing 98 spaces. So there's a significant increase in parking.
Mr. Delay?
That's going to be shared. The parking, that land belongs to the town?
No. So under, under the current situation where MMO is in the ICC, they have no parking. The ICC building doesn't have a single parking space. MMO does not have a single parking space. The town owns the spaces today, behind Wentworth Hall, and MMO uses some of those. Under this scenario, if MMO chooses to rent space from the developer, they would also rent parking spaces. They would come along, the parking spaces that are shown behind that building. Some of them would be for the community center, and some of them would be for the MMO. It would actually be a better situation than we have today because there are a significant, there's a significant increase in the number of spaces that are available for those uses.
So where the community centers, where you're planning to have the community center, we own some of those parking spaces?
We would have a right to use those parking spaces.
Okay, so they're not, they're not ours. He's going to be paying taxes on them. Is that it?
Correct. Correct. The land would be owned by the developer and would be taxable land.
All right. So we won't have the actual parking spaces. We have the ability to use them as, as we see fit?
We would, I would expect if the selectmen go forward with this, and negotiate a disposition agreement, that disposition agreement would involve parking easements, giving the town and its users the right to park in those parking spaces.
Okay.
And I would add that if we do that, it would carry with the land, so if there was any transfer of ownership, it would have to be maintained through any successor ownership.
And that's, that's usually what's done in downtown development. And that's the same thing that's done in mall development. There are several users, and there's a joint parking
Thank you. Now to Milisabla Beach Fabrizio, 32 Webster Street. I have one last question, and I, I believe it's for the Finance Commission, I guess. Correct me if I'm wrong. I understand that town residents have been very, very passionate about the ICC, and I'd like to learn why the town meeting articles, when we did the capital expenditures, I think I saw a line item of 600 or $650,000 that went to TURF here. And I don't understand why we, why the town couldn't be offered money from an account, whether it's the rainy, I don't know how they do, what the process is, but why didn't anyone want to offer money to keep the ICC? I don't get it. I mean, it was a million-something dollars, and you're spending $650,000 for TURF at the high school. So again, I, I think, I, my question is, why wasn't there a line item? Okay, we're going to, at town meeting, you know, this is the budget or whatever, and we're going to spend a million, 1.5 million to redo the ICC. How come that was never done?
So I'll take a shot. I'll address the TURF fields first. The TURF fields have a 10-year lifespan. They had reached their 10-year lifespan. They're a safety hazard at that point. So gladly, we replaced the TURF field at the high school.
I'm not being combative.
Let me finish. Let me finish. The question about whether we're going to spend a million and a half dollars on 14,000 square feet of space that is incredibly inefficient is a policy decision. And frankly, I don't think anybody in this town would spend that kind of money on their own property. So I don't know that we're going to ask the taxpayers to spend a million and a half dollars on 14,000 square feet of incredibly inefficient space. It was designed and built as a church. We all need to keep that in mind. We're making do with it. The town bought that land, or that property, because it was a good deal, frankly. And the idea was, there was an eye towards future development. What's really important to keep in mind with the ICC and the municipal parking lot, they were both in the hands of private owners within the past 20 years. If the town hadn't stepped in to purchase the municipal parking lot, it would be a gas station today. A mine-icky dealership. It would be a muffler shop, even better. If the town hadn't stepped in and bought the ICC, it would be residential use today. So we've got to keep that in mind. It's not saying, let's just spend a million and a half dollars and save this old building. There's been 20 years' worth of planning. It's a fair question, but I think we need to kind of level-set the conversation around these properties.
The other thing we do in our forecasting of capital improvements is we track things that, where they need capital improvements, like the ICC. It doesn't mean necessarily that we budget to fund them and take it to town meeting. And we have been watching the ICC, but with this conversation going on, we're looking at, is there something else that will happen with the building, so we aren't yet going to town meeting for approval? If we continue to own this property and want to keep it as a church, then we will have to go to town meeting for substantial capital dollars to be approved at town meeting. So.
So we, we pay attention, we've been tracking it, we had our facility staff estimate the cost, we've had a third party estimate the cost, and the numbers that we've been talking about tonight are only to upgrade it to be the same building it is today, you know, improve the architectural and everything else. If we want to improve the building's functionality, that's going to be more money. So we are aware of it, we just haven't, as a town, yet brought it to town meeting for approval. We're looking, we, we have, I think I mentioned at town meeting, about 30 items on the list. I don't, you know, it's, it's buildings, it's equipment. Not everything, because it's on the list, gets funded in any year. You want to guesstimate what the total capital improvements we have on that list is in dollars? Well, and that's not the schools.
We forgot the ring.
And we forgot the ring. So what Mike said is, I turned to him, he said about 20 million, but I said, that doesn't include the schools. If the schools have a building program come forward, they've indicated it could be over $50 million. John mentioned the hockey rink that he is a proponent of, just not in Islington Center, not at the cost of Mr. Petruzziello, but there is...
Don will have to start a GoFundMe page.
There you go. But I, all I want to let you know is, we look at these things, we monitor it, because we know something has a capital cost and its future, doesn't mean we take it to town meeting right away. We have priorities. The TURF field became a priority because it was a safety hazard if we didn't put the money in. That's just one example.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm just going to add one more thing. The building itself, the ICC currently is at least three-quarters occupied by the MMO. We showed the financing, the monies that we take in and the money which we need to just maintain it. We're covering our variable costs with the rent that we're charging the MMO of $84,000. If we were to make the $1.2 million investment in that building to bring it up to a standard that it should be at, we would have to necessarily, like any landlord, look to the MMO for an increase in rent. We've had a discussion with the MMO about the current rent that they're paying. They are very clear with us that they could not continue to operate if we significantly increase their rent on an annual basis. In fact, it's not even a significant increase in rent that would cause them to rethink whether or not they'd continue to provide services. So in effect, that if we made the $1.2 million investment in the building that it needs, we would continue to increase the subsidy we're already providing to the MMO for its operation.
And in effect, Westwood is a slumware then to the MMO. Right?
No, we're keeping the building and a function... We, we have it, we keep it and maintain it, but we are not able to make the investments in the mechanical.
My name is Jim Dwyer, I live on School Street, and I have several questions. One has to do with, the easiest one has to do with the amount of greenery in our town. And, and this is not much, but it's a little bit. I moved in 30 years ago, and there was a little more greenery back then than there certainly is now. And I, I look at where the library and the tavern is going to be, and that would be taking out this tiniest part that we could possibly imagine, that in the springtime has about a dozen of the most beautiful white blooming trees that you'll ever see, with benches in the air and things like that. And, and it's being situated there, I guess, so that we don't cut in any more parking spots, which reminds me a little bit of the song about keeping, keeping parking lots and paving over greenery or something. So anyhow, I, I would not, I, I wish the park could stay there and, you know, maybe move the tavern and the library back to that second level of where the parking spaces are. I mean, I'm concerned that with the building, well, first of all, I, I like the buildings that Mr. Petruzziello is, is putting up, the renovations to the, where the pizza and post offices, that looks very lovely. In retrospect, I wish there was a little bit more greenery where he's building the new apartments. Hopefully, there will be trees there, or hopefully that the trees that have been torn up in front of the post office and pizza place will be put back in once, and I guess there are pipes being put in there or whatever. And, you know, we're just not going to have a series of buildings that are built out to the sidewalks that we just become basically buildings in concrete. And like I look at the, the former Islington Church, and, you know, they have just a little bit of grass there, maybe it's only 10 feet, but it's a little bit of grass. And I could see a developer saying, I don't need grass, can't make money off of grass. So, you know, they're going to go and build out the, you know, what rentable space you can have, right out to the sidewalk, you know, and he says, ah, that's just grass, you know, we don't need that, can't make money off of it. And, you know, the selectmen and the planning board says, that's okay, we want taxes, you know, we don't care about the grass. But I think that's an intangible, that that's really important. I mean, like the MMO, I mean, you know, I, I know even 30 years ago, when I, I had small children, that was really tough to find childcare. And, and though it might be a certain amount of subsidy on the town's part, that it might be well worth it in the general welfare of the town to keep daycare, this one daycare thriving in Westwood, and, you know, and to say, well, you know, all right, maybe we, you know, we could make more money by kicking you out, or, you know, something like that. But, you know, in the long range, that, long term, that may not be to our benefit, even though in the short run, we get, we, we make more money off of it. And, I don't know, this is playing devil's advocate, but my idea that when we fill the position that, that NOR now has, my understanding was that that position was to help developers understand what the, what committees they had to go before, and what the rules and regulations were to, you know, build in town, and to really try to be a, a middleman between the town and the developers to, to help them build in town, to, you know, understand the bureaucracy and the politics behind building. And, and what I see in this position tonight and a number of other meetings that I've gone to, is that this position has turned into a town paid for and sponsored lobbying on behalf of developers. And I'm not saying that's good or bad, but if, if you are going to have that position, then I think it's fair to have someone on the other side to be a sort of devil's advocate and say, okay, well, that's good from the developer's point of view, but from the resident's point of view, you might want to consider this.
Thank you for that. So let me just, can I just address one of your concerns, though? Because I don't want...
Sure.
People rely on MMO greatly, and MMO has provided a great service to the town. So we currently have a lease agreement with the MMO through August of 2018. We have agreed with them to renegotiate in December of 2017 about conditions after that. I think that in credit to everybody, there isn't script, task force, to the residents, to the town, there has been so much care and concern around the MMO in any future development. And we have to remind ourselves, it's a private entity. As a, as a, as a community, and we should all be somewhat proud of this, as taxpayers, we are subsidizing a private entity, that we believe that the trade-off is that they're providing a great service to the town. So I don't want, I don't want to cause any undue fear for anybody who has a child enrolled in the MMO or is entering in the fall. We have agreements with them through at least 2018.
Yeah, we have agreement for the next two years. I mean, I'm really thinking long-term beyond that.
Yeah, we ought to.
Yeah.
And I'd like to comment on our, our structure and having a planning department and economic development. They do not function in the lobbyist's function. They actually do exactly what you said they should be doing as a department. They are an intermediary. This whole department is full of professional experts in planning, in regulations, in zoning, and, and have been guiding the Islington Task Force throughout its year-plus of work. I mean, year and a half? Are we on two years yet, ladies? Long time. So they do function just as you suggested they should be. I just want to assure you that, that, we are not here hearing that we are being told what to do because it's in the developer's interest. We, as a town, said, we want to issue an RFP and see if we can do something productive for the town, and it would probably require a developer to be able to do that. As you can see, they're private ownership interests and public. And we were the ones that initiated the idea of maybe doing some kind of joint effort. So I just want to assure you that we are not being lobbied or told what to do. We, we rely on our professional staff quite a bit, we rely on consultants when the planning board does work, and there are a lot of people that are looking out for the town's interests as we and they all should be. So I just want to assure you of that.
I hope so, but, you know, I, I just hear NOR talking, and she is a fantastically knowledgeable person.
I don't think we should make this personal about any one employee. I think we really, we should stop at that, though.
Thank you, thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else? I triggered a whole bunch. Okay.
Hi, my name is Caroline Layden, and I'm at 136 School Street. And I just had a comment and a question. The first comment is, when I'm looking at the plans and I'm looking at what's happening in Islington, to me, it seems like we're losing the thing that the residents of Islington value the most, and that's the village feel. And it seems to be slipping away. And I really think, when you look at the questionnaires, when you look at people who have come out to speak at the various meetings, that's the one point that comes over, is said over and over again by residents, is the village feel. And I don't think that we're getting that with these plans. The other thing, too, that I find very concerning is the town sharing property in the same building with a private individual. I don't think that's a good idea. I think our building needs to be separate, their building needs to be separate. They can be next to each other, but I don't think they should be in the same building where we have a condo-type situation. And the other question I had was, after what had happened with, at the town meeting, I'd like to know if there's a Plan B, if the vote doesn't go for the selling of the land or the transfer, what then? Because, I mean, I think it's a really, I think it's a strong possibility that it's not going to happen. So I'd like to know what is going to happen at that point? Is there a Plan B? Is that even being thought about at that point, at this point?
So Caroline, I mean, I will take that. I, my hope is that we get to a point of consensus, and that we're all at town meeting agreeing on the best plan. We all want the same thing. So I don't think any of us should be looking at this as, I'm going to oppose whatever comes down the road. I mean, my hope is that no one has that in their mind. Maybe I'm wrong. If I'm wrong, tell me. But I, I'm, I'm hoping that this is collaboration. I mean, if everybody already has their mindset, and they're going to town meeting and they're going to fight, I guess I don't know why we're continuing to have discussion. My hope is that we're continuing to have dialogue. I feel like the things I'm hearing from people tonight is helpful to me. I feel like through this whole process, and I was really, I came into the Islington Square Task Force meeting as an observer after I had been elected elected, so I sat and listened, and I felt there was an evolution of thought, and there was an evolution of opinion. And so my hope is that that continues. So I'm not, I don't, as the, as the chair of the board said, let's start working on Plan B. We're still working on a plan that I am hopeful gets us to a consensus point. As far as, I just will address, though, this, this issue of a private entity and a public entity sharing space, that exists today in Islington. The MMO is a private entity in our public building, and we have all blessed that. So I'm not sure why suddenly that's so offensive. Can you use the microphone? I'd like to know why it's different.
If, if they rent from us, we own the building, we control what happens to the building. It's a totally different situation, as far as I'm concerned. If it was the reverse and we were renting from the MMO, I would not be for that at all. And, you know, as to your comments, I do appreciate trying to work with the community. But to be honest with you, when I was at that meeting, I, I was shocked that the majority of, of the people at the meeting would have voted to overturn both of the districts. Now, I know we needed a two-thirds majority, but there was a majority. And I think when you go to present this meeting, this plan, you're going to need the two-thirds, too. And I see, you know, more and more people just getting frustrated and not coming to meetings, and, but they will turn up at town meeting to vote. So, I mean, I do think the question of a Plan B is a legitimate question, but I do appreciate your, you know, trying to work with people and, and thinking that this is, you know, a collaborative effort. I do appreciate that, and thank you.
Can I, I want to go back to some, a couple themes that have come up in the last two sets of comments about the village feel and landscaping and green space. Having attended some of the task force meetings and watching them online, and Helen, I might want to put you on the spot since you led that group, and only, only in a summary sense, but am I not correct that that has been a big part, aid, an element amongst many of the focus of the task force?
That has been an element, and we've had, we, we do have a number of people who are actually knowledgeable about green space and development and so forth, and there's been some recommendations that we've had in terms of adding additional green space to this. Again, it is a concept plan, and one of the, the discussions we had had with Petruzziello was trying to add some green space in the places between buildings and so forth. So that, again, is something that we, as the Islington Task Force, will be following this process and continue to make sure that we bring those issues up.
Right, because there was a condition that you've recommended to us, you, the task force...
That's correct.
About the project-level plans, including well-designed and appropriately-located public spaces adjacent to buildings and accessible from Washington Street, and to the extent possible, provide public gathering space and outdoor seating. And I...
That is correct.
While it isn't explicit in terms of green space, I've got to imagine seating space is meant to be in green areas with trees and shading and things like that.
That is what it's meant to be, yes.
Okay, so we're on that same page, because I agree with you and task force that that's important.
Can we get the gentleman in the back, and then Mr. Rock?
Thank you. Excuse me, I'm Steve Vrafsky, 646 Canton Street, and I don't want to go over other things, but I just want to get a little more of a perspective on this from a different perspective. You mentioned this process has been going on for 20 years. It's been over 20 years. And it was over 20 years that the town approved the comprehen, the money for a comprehensive plan. And we looked at several things in the town. I served for 25 years on the planning board and economic development, and I think there's some major accomplishments here. And as I go back and think, well, we were talking about 20 years ago, and there were many people involved in the process, dozens of meetings, over 100 people, I think, and Mike could validate, coming to different meetings throughout the process. There's a lot of accomplishments here, and I think we ought to point them out publicly and acknowledge them. One of the biggest problems in Islington, and personally, I think Islington has become an eyesore over the last 20 years, and we need to do something to bring it up, and I applaud the town for continuing to try to do that. One of the biggest problems when you try to do something like that is to get enough real estate under one project so you can implement something that's meaningful. That's what has been accomplished here. There's enough real estate that the town, with the right advisors, can do something very, very, very significant for our community. Secondly, I personally, because I've been involved with the process, have a lot of confidence in the process. The problem we have now is everything's a concept plan. If we go back to University Station, we started with concept plans that people were very negative about, that people thought were going to be the end of the town, that the traffic was going to kill us, that all these terrible people that I didn't know exist were going to move into town and all the rest. But it evolved, the concept plan isn't what happened, people listened, town boards listened. What's nice about Westwood is someone who ran that project, I have had literally dozens of calls of people to apologize for what they said at meetings, to compliment the town for the result, and my sense is this is the same type of thing. A concept plan is not what, it's going to be close to what we get, it's to try to define what can happen and how do we start from here to make it better. As far as concerns about greenery and things like that, I got to tell you, our planning board goes overboard. If there's a criticism of the planning board, is they put too much green in where it can't possibly grow. I just think those things happen. As far as comments about you don't know what you've got, or it's bad until you complain, that's not true either. A project like this, I'm sure, would have a condition. The traffic would be monitored, the conditions that are important to the town would be monitored. We don't need to wait for complaints, we need to make sure that these things are monitored and are corrected. So, I just wanted to stand up to acknowledge it's been a long process, I have not been involved with the last process of the last few months, but as I look at this, this is a home run, this is a great accomplishment, this is a way to get a lot of land under a common development, it's a way to get a positive-looking, architecturally-well-designed village look back to the community, and I applaud everyone who's been involved. Thank you.
So, I just have a question, there's been a lot of discussion about the split tax rate, and we just had a meeting where they just reduced the university of commercial by fifty thousand square feet, but they're going to continue with the residential. So, if we add more residential with a smaller amount of commercial here, how are we going to fill that gap? We're just going to keep getting wider and wider, and we're going to lose that tax, split tax rate.
So, a recent decision on University Station actually did just the opposite, it did not reduce the commercial space, it eliminated additional residential space from Phase Two of the development, Development Area B, and it did so by replacing what would have been residential with more commercial. At the same time, one of the commercial structures that's within that area is a nonprofit office building, a medical office building, and the selectmen have approved a pilot agreement, a payment in lieu of taxes agreement on that parcel. But the modification of the University Station plan was intended to better balance the split tax rate, because the proposal, as it stood, with an additional three-hundred units of residential that were not supported by an equivalent amount of commercial, would have been a concern. So, I believe that we actually moved in the right direction there. As far as this development goes, the intention would be the same, to maintain commercial, to increase commercial, and to not exceed the floor area of commercial with more residential. So, in this case, there would be far more commercial space than residential space. You can see the CVS building is a standalone building, the MMO would be commercial space, and the first floor of the former ICC building, the recreation of that building would be commercial space. In addition, the idea here is that the development would spur additional commercial development, and that's the real reason why mixed-use development is successful, because by bringing in the residential dwellers, you attract more commercial business. So, we believe that this proposal would increase the ability for the town to maintain its split tax rate, whereas doing nothing would likely decrease that.
Joe Layden, School Street, just two quick questions. In terms of the continuing process now, will financial information be coming to the board or selectmen from the developer that will culminate in your decision next week, is it?
No, we will not be making, we're meeting June 5th, we will not be doing any of this June 5th meeting, we're meeting after that, June 19th, and I expect we'll be doing some deliberation at that point. I think from here, one of the things we need to talk to the town administrator about is getting outside counsel involved, we've got to kind of figure out those steps and how that will proceed. But there will be financial information shared, yes.
Will that financial information be available to the public?
Well, didn't you just summarize financial information tonight for us? I think it'd be great if you can put that in a recorded form. You were going through many numbers, and all of us were trying to keep up, as I was, so I think that's what you're referring to, correct?
Thank you, yes.
Yeah.
Last question, I know that on the post office building and the mixed-use building, I personally felt sorry for the guy that was left with five-foot buffer zone and the person that looks out onto the mixed-use building, or the mixed-use building looks into his backyard. And is there a process where a particular taxpayer feels aggrieved that they have some remedy if they feel their tax value's been depreciated by...
They could file for an abatement.
If there's diminution of value.
Yeah. If there's diminution of value, any of us could file for an abatement. The merits of it, I don't know, I would reach out to the assessor's office.
Okay. And then the five-foot buffer zones, it'd be nice if those could be, you know, widened a little bit for the people.
That went through the planning board process, right, with special permit?
I think it was, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm thinking of the first house on the left side of School Street. There was a five-foot buffer zone, or maybe a three-foot buffer zone, and it was left there because it was grandfathered.
So, you're talking about going up School Street?
First house on the left.
First house on the left. You want a five-foot, tell me what you mean, though, I don't...
The buffer zone is the existing buffer zone that existed before the developer took over the building.
Okay.
And the planning board chose to, because of parking considerations, I think, not expand that buffer zone. Normally, it would have been, I think, like twenty feet, but since it was already grandfathered at three to five feet, they left it. And it, you know, would be nice if there was some effort to give relief to somebody that's only got a five-foot buffer zone.
Okay, that's a lot, so I know what we, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Mary Beth Persons, Seven Bridle Path. I'm a member of the Islington Task Force, and just getting back to the village comment, we did a lot of thinking and talking about that concept, and I just wanted to add that some of the things that, you know, we talked about a lot is obviously what makes a village feel. And right now, you know, there are, at different times of day or evening, there are not a lot of people in Islington at certain times of evening or day, unless maybe there's a baseball game going on, or you're at the playground or whatever. And, you know, because of some of the development that would go on, obviously, we're hoping that people would...